Giveaway and learned a lot about a lot of programming that they had over there pickleball and different programs that they have, but I would recommend that you do extend yourself to Park and Rick also. So interested in, like my other colleagues, speaking further with you all to see how we can really impact young people particularly since it's an uptick in, you know, gun violence all across the nation and as you stated, you know, the dream of most P kids being professional athletes, I think we need to get beyond just expanding their minds to do, you know, to do some other things. Workforce development, I did hear you say workforce development, which is very key to those who, you know, don't want to go to college. So I commend you all for this great effort.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys. Appreciate your time today. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Now read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the items numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Madam Clerk, could we please read through the items on our consent agenda?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda starts on page two with item number one. We go over to page three with item number six. Please note on item number six that it was also recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. On page four, we have items seven and eight. Page five, we have items nine, 10, and 11. Please note that item 10 was also recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. On page six, we have items 12, 13, and 14. On page seven, we have items 15, 16, and 17. Page eight, we have items 18, 19, and 20. Page nine, we have items 21, 22, and 23. There are a couple of corrections we need to make. On item number 21, it is like the two, three, four. The sixth line down, it says Sherrod Construction Company. It should say Russo Corporation. And on item 22, where it says Planning, Engineering, and Permits Department, it should actually be Capital Projects and it's recommended by the Director of Capital Projects. Page 10, we have items 24, 25, and 26. Page 11, we have items 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32. And that completes the consent agenda. Please note, we do have two items on the addendum.
Right. Okay. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove items to the consent agenda? Counselor Moore?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to pull item 11 off of consent on page five, five.
Okay. Item 11 on page five is removed from consent. Counselor Abbott?
Yes, I would like to remove from consent item seven on page four and item 12 on page six.
Item seven on page four and item 12 on page six are removed from consent agenda. Counselor Smithman?
I just want to make one correction to item four. So there wasn't a vote received from Budget and Finance because it was one yes and one abstention. There's only two of us. And then I think another committee, there's another correction.
Yeah, that's incorrect. The Economic Development and Tourism Committee recommended as well.
Yes, sir. I was going to make note of that when we got to that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. All right. We have one public hearing item. That is item number one. Do any members of the public wish to remove item one from the consent agenda? All right. Hearing none.
Second?
Have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. That was Williams and Smithman.
Okay.
And we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. The consent agenda is approved. So first item is item two.
Yes, sir. It'll be item number two on page two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, the chief of police, and the director of traffic engineering to extend the experimental road closures in Eastlake, Project Safe Streets, Eastlake, for an additional 90 days from the effective date of this or of the ordinance and to provide notice to the public of the date and time of a public hearing before the before this council to consider the indefinite closure of the roadways identified in Project Safe Streets, Eastlake. This is an item of permanent operation and it's also setting a pub, uh, we also need the date of the public hearing, uh, announcement. Before we take it up, we need unanimous consent.
Motion, DC.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion on the item.
Second.
All right. So it's motion, second, there's discussion on the item. Counselor Clark?
Just the Director of Traffic Engineering, just, I mean, do we have a Director of Traffic Engineering? It's ex-
Well, it's supposed to be the Department of Transportation, so it's, um, the Director of the Department of Transportation.
Okay.
And just need to announce the date of the public hearing.
Counselors, the new public hearing date is going to be set for January 14th, 2025. That's contained in item 33.
Got that date?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. That item is approved. Item number three, please.
Item number three. Let me close this one out. Item number three is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute and enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement with the Jefferson County District Attorney, 10th Judicial Circuit and an amount not to exceed $100,000 to fund the Jefferson County District Attorney Certified Victim Service Officers Program, which is offered to provide support and engagement for victims of crime by offering direct comprehensive services to all victims of crime in Jefferson County to attempt to alleviate the reluctant victims of crime experience due to feeling unsafe navigating the criminal justice system or the inability to participate due to transportation issues, mental health problems, or financial issues that may be associated with the victimization itself. The term of the agreement shall not exceed a period of three years from its effective date and authorizing the mayor to execute any other documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of the agreement. Again, this is an item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent first to take up the item.
Second.
Williams and Moore?
And I apologize, I didn't, did not do this one. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn. I'm sorry, Councilor Paul T.
Aye.
Now we need a motion on the item.
Second.
So that was again, Williams and Moore.
Thank you.
Uh, is there any discussion on this item? Counselor Moore?
Yeah, Mr. President. Just glad that, you know, I'm able to put, you know, upper dollars towards this project. Oftentimes, you know, we, we talk about, you know, if you see something, say something. Uh, but there are several folks that, you know, have been victimized that, you know, are afraid to speak up, that are afraid to, you know, come out and provide the information that's necessary, um, to, you know, addressing these issues of violence that we have in our city. And so, um, glad to be able to partner with, you know, the District Attorney's Office, uh, to be able to provide some support to those victims, uh, so that we can amplify their voices, uh, and ensure that, you know, no one else is victimized in the same way. And so, um, just want to say thank you to, uh, him as well as his office and the council. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Smithman?
Uh, I just want to thank Counselor Moore for this. A lot of people don't know, my mom actually started this program back in the eighties when she worked for the DA's office, but when I interned for the DA, you know, I got to see firsthand from beginning to end, from the intake to go into court and how many people, um, are intimidated from testifying, what Counselor Moore is saying, don't have the means. Um, so I really think this is going to help, especially with our crime situation, uh, giving support to people that they need for these cases. So, um, thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any additional discussions? All right. I believe we're ready for the vote.
All in, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. That item is approved. Item number four, please.
Item number four on page three. An ord, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement between the City of Birmingham and L R Y Media Group, LLC, under which L R Y will undertake a project to refurbish and transform the former Birmingham Credit Union Building located at 708 17th Street, North Birmingham into its primary office for event management and logistics. The city has agreed to make the property available to L R Y at a use value of $30,000 in support of the project. This is an item of permanent operation and please let me note that the item was, had no recommendation from Budget and Finance Committee and no recommendation from the Economic Development and Tourism Committee. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
We would also like to, um, take item five under consideration at the same time, so we'll consider them together, so.
All right. Uh, if I could just get the first reading on this one and then we'll get the first reading on the second one, then we'll take them together.
Okay.
So for unanimous consent, I need unanimous consent on this one.
I move for you, see.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council President Paul T. Alexander?
Aye.
And Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Okay. So you want to now go on and get UC for your other item. Uh, let me read item number five. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement between the City of Birmingham and Slade Land Use Environmental and Transportation Planning, LLC, under which Slade will undertake a project to redevelop, rehabilitate, and convert the interior, exterior, and surrounding grounds of the property located at 1616 Sabbath Avenue, North Birmingham, Alabama, 35203, to use as its primary office with an estimated investment of approximately $2.6 million for capital improvements and the creation, retention of seven full-time jobs. The city has agreed to make the property available to Slade at a use value of $60,000 in support of the project. And now we, we need unanimous, oh, and please let, let us note that it has a no recommendation by the Economic Development and Tourism Committee.
Move for you, see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council President Paul T. Alexander?
Aye.
And Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Now we need a motion. We're going to vote on both items together.
So move the items.
Second. Okay. It's a motion by, uh, Counselor Alexander and did I hear a second? Um, Counsel Tate. Okay. So discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Um, pursuant to, uh, section 36 dash 25A dash 7A 6, it's the recommendation of the Office of the City Attorney that these two items be discussed in executive session.
Okay.
Can I make a comment first? It's not, it's just the wording. wording of the resolution. So, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, the language in the resolution where it says the city has agreed to make the property available, I just feel like it's a recommendation. The city cannot agree until we authorize the agreement. Is that?
Okay. Noted.
It's recommended, right? To this council for approval? Okay. Just, just wanted to make.
Okay. So we have, uh, recommendation to go into executive session, so we have a mo- motion for executive session.
I move for executive session.
Second.
So it's, uh, Moore and Abbott.
All right. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council President Paul T. Alexander?
Aye.
And Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
All right. So we will go into executive session and we will reconvene at the call of the chair. Thank you.[1090.61]
Are we ready? All right, Madam Clark, could we please call the roll?
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
He's right there.
Okay. Councilmember Smithman.
Yes.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Hey, here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
President Protem Alexander.
Present.
And Council President O'Quinn.
Present. All right, council, so we have a motion and a second on items four and five before us. Is there any additional discussion? Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we've, you know, discussed some of this in executive session, but I feel like, you know, today I'm appointing myself keeper of the flame. I'm quite fond of the two business owners involved in this, these proposals, and I've known them for many, many years. And so I feel like I owe them somewhat of an explanation, but I cannot support the proposals in their present form. I have peculiar knowledge of why these parcels were bought in the first place because I negotiated the contracts to buy most of them. I also have peculiar knowledge of planning efforts that, recent planning efforts, you know, way beyond the 20-plus-years-ago plans, led by REV and Urban Impact. I served on the boards of each of these entities at different times. And the most recent study, the MKSK study, was published just two years ago in 2022. It was sponsored by Alabama Power Company to establish a community-vetted vision for the redevelopment of these lands following the blow-up with the plan that, the plan to locate the global forum in this site. And, and this was before COVID. This planning work happened during COVID and the publishing of this plan happened as recently as just two years ago. So this land is not just any land. I love Inslee, but there is no comparison. This land is the most important land I can think of to represent the history and heritage of our city and its fight to end segregation and racial terror. This is holy ground for Birmingham. The whole world knows what happens on these, what happened on these streets and around these lands, and some come to see it, and it's not much to look at now. But owning the land puts us squarely in control of how it develops. parsing it back out to new owners takes that control away. That is why the city bought this land and working cooperatively with Alabama Power, the Fountain Heights neighborhood, and other community stakeholders. We can see some of the fruits of their earlier collaboration, you know, dating back before the Kincaid administration when I came on the scene and started working in this area. Some might say, oh, to hell with plans, but, and this plan is old, but I would say the plan isn't just old, but it's, the vision is time-tested because every city center master plan update since the 90s has reaffirmed the vision for this and the adjacent block as primarily residential, anchored, medium-density, mixed-use, with ground-floor retail, ground-floor office, and the MKSK plan of 2022 introduced a boutique hotel across from the park, in addition, in line with the ground-floor retail and the residential. So a development plan for these and adjacent lands that still achieves the highest and best use and the community's vision for the land could still create a home office or home office condos for the two businesses that the mayor is seeking support for in his proposals today. Now, as for being old, it's obvious to me that many key people in decision-making positions are not aware of the old plan or the new plans or the plans that have come forward since, and planning and regulating development is the province of this council. Now, the city planners sit in the administrative branch, but the development regulations and the overlay districts and all of those things are the wheelhouse of this council. But, but more importantly, you know, these plans aren't created in a vacuum. Every time we do planning, we get a lot of community input. We invite stakeholders, landowners, others who are interested, business owners, residents, because even though this isn't the neighborhood that we're striving to make it, it's in the Fountain Heights neighborhood. It's not the residential part of the neighborhood. It is in Fountain Heights. And so these things are, you know, plans are a way to build community consensus, and I believe this area has been planned over and over and over again because we're trying to get it right. You know, this is an area that represents the history and heritage of our city as it relates to our civil rights history. So I'll end by noting the sheer coincidence of receiving something just yesterday from B.C.R.I. about yet another synthesis of all these plans for our Holy Land. We know they're in the midst of retooling. We just approved their new board slate last week. And, you know, we know something has to happen for B.C.R.I. to live and survive and, and become the destination that it once was. But anyway, they invited me to meet with designers they're consulting with. It says, "Updates about our ongoing efforts to refine the, to refine the vision and strategy for the Birmingham Civil Rights District. These plans are built on a solid foundation of previous work, including the Birmingham City Center Master Plan, City Center Vision, Northwest Quadrant Master Plan, and the National Park Service Plan for the National Monument Site, as well as a multitude of ideas and opportunities." I'm quoting from something I received yesterday, and, I mean, the, the timing was serendipitous. But anyway, apparently the Civil Rights Institute is working with a group called MAS, and they worked along the equal, they worked alongside the Equal Justice Initiative in co-developing the award-winning National Memorial for Peace and Justice in Montgomery, Alabama. And their Birmingham work will guide B.C.R.I. in properly positioning itself as an asset that better interconnects with the district around it. All that said, my wish for us is not to make this an either-or, but rather hold out for the both-and. In other words, now that everyone knows that the stakeholders have a vision for this land, let's hold out for the bigger vision, which, which can also include ground-floor office condos for these two businesses, should they desire to be a part of a bigger vision. So many stakeholders have come, come together to plan and plan and plan and plan in an effort to build community consensus to get this right. Approving what's before us today would be less thoughtful and maybe disrespectful of the people who sat and envisioned for this area time and time again. While the uses proposed are not specifically prohibited by the plan, they do not support the vision or align with the vision that has been set forth for this property. And I will just end by saying, this is not just any land for Birmingham. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing, Council Woods. Uh, Councilor Abbott.
Well, I just wanted to say that I agree with what she said, and therefore I'm not going to say it all over again, but I believe that the both-and proposal is the best one. I mean, it is true that renovating an old building, if it was historic or had any character to it, would probably be pretty exciting, but neither of these buildings fits that bill. You have a one-story building and a two-story building in a space that was planned to have four- and five-story buildings, mid-range buildings, and have commercial on the first floor, which, guess what, these two businesses are commercial. So it seems like that that would be preferable, even for them possibly, to be moving into new space instead of having to spend millions on renovations of buildings that were supposed to be demolished, but we never got around to it. Martha Espy and I met Latrice Slade when she first graduated from college and was coming out and going into business for herself. I admire these ladies, and I think they need a place to, to operate their businesses. But it's the fact that we've spent all this time developing these plans, and some of us have actually participated in them, and then to see that we're just kind of tossing it out the window and, you know, moving ahead with something that's convenient in the moment, just, you know, I'm having, I, I just can't support it. But I did want to comment because the, the people who want to move in, certainly if we had known that this property was going to be declared surplus, we might have had some input ahead of time and precluded the embarrassment that would occur if we said no. And it could happen anytime. It just hasn't happened until now. So it's something to think about for the council because we really do need a process by which we declare property surplus before any outside entity spends their money developing plans, something that might not happen. Thank you.
All right, Council Woods.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I think, you know, had, had an opportunity to hear a lot today, a lot of good points, and I think I have a, a understanding of where some of y'all are coming from, you know, but, you know, I think plans are important, but we can't handcuff ourselves to every plan that's been created. I think we have to leave room for ourselves to basically impact the present and build towards the future that we see. I think the Civil Rights District is extremely important, and to me specifically, but, you know, I, I would question any plan that doesn't have room. you know, I, I would question any plan that doesn't have room in the Civil Rights District for, uh, two of the sharpest, brightest, uh, black business owners that we have in our city. I think one of the things as I've been here, I have, and it's been a, it's been a, a friction point, uh, for me, but I've really been consistent in asking and pressing, uh, the administration to create more opportunity for, uh, black business owners. And so I think we kind of hit some points where the plan that might've been in place doesn't align with, uh, something that I, that's very passionate, that I'm very passionate about is seeing, uh, black business owners get opportunities that have built a proven track record, that have expressed and shown, uh, what they're truly capable of. I think, you know, the city participating in, uh, creating those opportunities. I think we, you know, I've been on Economic Development, uh, Committee most of the time. I've been at the council, and we, we just don't see a lot of, um, these type of opportunities for, uh, businesses that are prepared to take advantage of them. And so, um, you know, I think I've advocated for that, whether it be, you know, small business owners, contractors across the board. And I think we've got to continue to do more, continue to create more opportunities for, uh, these black business owners, minority business owners that are truly prepared to take advantage of them, that have, have done the work, have their, uh, you know, built their foundation and are ready to take that leap. And if we can do anything to help springboard them, I think we have to do it. We've got to be more consistent in that. Um, you know, and I've heard both of the presentations from, uh, both of these business owners. I think they have tremendous vision, and I think they are prepared to execute on what they have in place. And so, um, I'm excited to be in a position to support this. I think, um, you know, with this, you know, we just need to continue to find more opportunities to uplift, uh, the business owners because one, I think it's important in this situation for these specific two business owners to have that opportunity, but, um, I think it just continues to send a signal to, uh, you know, minority business owners in Birmingham that there's opportunity here. The city will, uh, hear you, and if you have your stuff together, the city is willing to, uh, partner with you, uh, to grow the city as a whole. I mean, we, we're, we will benefit from this as well, uh, as a city in our tax coffers and our, um, fees and things like that will continue to grow. And so we're, we need to kind of look at it through the lens of the property that we have, the resources that we have. How can we utilize that to uplift and springboard? And I can't really think of a better use for land in the civil rights, uh, footprint than to springboard, uh, to businesses like the ones we have in front of us today. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to prolong the time, but I just want to, uh, agree with Council Woods here and just thank Rashida and Latrice for presenting some great projects and really setting the stage for young black women who are dreaming, you know, to, uh, go alongside and, and start businesses, um, you know, in Birmingham. You know, they both do some great work, um, you know, have seen Rashida's work, um, have seen Latrice's work, and we just, as Council Woods said, we just got to be, do a better job at making sure we support those that are able to, um, you know, produce a product. Because one thing I do say is, and you know, and I say it openly here, you know, we can give people a, you know, people come to us all the time for projects, but one thing I very intentionally saying to people, how, what's your goal to sustain what you're doing beyond, you know, the city council, because the administration's changed, plans, people changed, things don't get executed. You know, I, we, we've heard a lot here today, and, um, I just have to agree with my colleague, Council Woods, on this one.
All right. Um, so I'll just add a couple of things. For me, this is, uh, you know, really about, uh, process. And so, you know, I think had this proceeded differently, um, we could have largely arraigned, erode at the same, you know, point, um, and possibly, um, help these business owners, you know, in, uh, in a way that would have positioned them, you know, differently long-term. Um, so, um, you know, I'm looking forward to conversation with the administration about, you know, how to proceed in the future. Um, you know, we have had, uh, quite a bit of discussion with the mayor about the, um, number of assets that the city has held on to over the years. And I think, you know, the administration has taken that to heart and, um, moved forward with trying to, uh, dispose of some properties that, you know, we really don't need, uh, don't, you know, uh, contribute to the, the, the future of the city. So, um, you know, I think that this is, we've arrived here as part of that conversation too, but, um, you know, again, I look forward to, um, this council and the mayor and, uh, his staff having conversation about, um, how to, uh, proceed with future conversations in a way, um, that doesn't, you know, involve getting, uh, businesses, uh, kind of caught in the middle. So with that, Protim Alexander.
Thank you, um, Dr. O'Quinn. You just made me think of something as you gave your final remarks. I know today we're in the process of looking at two businesses that want to come and have an opportunity to do business with the city of Birmingham, that could generate not only property tax, but hopefully occupational tax, as well as, um, be an economic development driver for this city. We've also talked ad nauseam about planning and processing, which are very, very important to us. And we've also even heard about holy ground. I believe that this is an opportunity for us as the council and as the city of Birmingham to take the dreams and aspirations of the very people that this city was built upon, opportunity, history, and economic development. And we see two women who want to be a driving force in leading that. So when people come and visit and they come in, uh, in the B C R I makeup and framework of the city, and you have an opportunity to show them two businesses that were built and had a vision of two strong, dedicated black women, I'm willing to support that. I'm also though, I do feel process management is very important to us, and that's something we can take up as a council with the administration and drive that out and make this a better process. But I do not want to see two people with vision, with hope, they've done the work, they've brought us the information that we asked for, and I feel that I don't want to get them hung up on a process that we feel may not be, uh, the best at this time. So I would like that, I would like to call for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Do we, let's, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Abbott?
No.
Councilmember Clark?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithelman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
President Protim Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn? So that vote is seven ayes and two nays.
Right, so that item passes. Next item, please.
The next item will be item number seven. It is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the city of Birmingham and Central Alabama Redevelopment Alliance in an amount not to exceed $90,000, under which Central Alabama Re- Redevelopment Alliance will provide services to the city to benefit the poor and needy of Birmingham through the implementation of a project to open its nonprofit small business accelerator program to strengthen non-governmental organizations that work to strengthen at-risk individuals and families. Upon successful completion of the nonprofit small business accelerator program, nonprofit organizations will have a 3D small business model that has a program model, a funding model, and a policy model that prepares them to do business with government and private funders, which will provide nonprofit organizations with the capability to know their metrics and track their impact upon individuals and families that they serve. Need a motion, please?
Ms. Abbott? So Quinn and Moore, is there any discussion on this item?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Um, I ask this to be taken off just so someone can ex- explain what a 3D small business model means. I read it, but I didn't understand it. So who's here to talk about it? Yeah, it says it's District Four and District Five is funding it, so do y'all know?
So, uh, Councilor Abbott, um, we have worked with, uh, Central Alabama Redevelopment Alliance, um, previously, and, um, you know, I can't say that I have a full understanding of, you know, that specific terminology, but I can tell you, um, what, what that organization does is, um, take existing nonprofit organizations and non-governmental organizations, um, that have been existence and, and usually they're, um, they're, the cohort that they look at are, are organizations that have existed for at, at least three years, so they have a track record of, um, you know, success, reading, reaching to that point and working with those organizations to, to try and take them to the next level. So it's sort of like a, um, almost like an innovation depot, but for service organizations, for, um, organizations that are, you know, have started locally, um, and, you know, kind of developed to grassroots, but then, uh, really trying to mentor them and educate them, um, and connect them to resources that they need, um, to, you know, continue to grow, um, and expand. And, and really, you know, one of the key things is, um, connecting them to, to outside resources. So a lot of our, um, service organizations are not-for-profits, um, especially when they're smaller, rely on, uh, local philanthropy, local fundraising, um, and there are, there's lots of, um, um, support beyond, outside just the region. Um, there's, you know, national foundations and, you know, federal funding, um, and, and other source of, um, potential, um, finances and, and otherwise, um, that those organizations can be connected to. And that's what, um, CARA is, is our Central Alabama Redevelopment Alliance. Um, that's one of their objectives is to, um, you know, really from a economic development perspective, is to help these not-for-profit organizations grow and, um, be able to pull resources from outside of the metropolitan statistical area into, into our economy.
Okay, well, 3D printed now, ready, go NGO doesn't really mean anything to me, but your explanation was understandable, so I'll go with it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, um, no additional discussion. We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that motion passes. Next item is item number 11.
Eleven on, in pa- item 11 is on page five. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the city of Birmingham and Love Joy Ministries, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $117,625, under which Love Joy Ministries, Inc. will provide services to the city to benefit the poor and needy of Birmingham through the implementation of its new STEM Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Program. This program not only focuses on providing high-quality STEM curriculum and materials, but will also address the critical need for improved security measures within the learning environment to foster a safe learning environment while enriching educational experiences through a robust STEM program tailored for early learners to foster curiosity, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills in our young learners by providing the hands-on experiences and interactive learning opportunities that are essential to developing these skills. Need a motion, please?
Second.
All right, that was Abbott and Moore. Councilmore?
Yes, uh, I just wanted to, you know, take this item off of consent just to, um, really just, you know, talk about, uh, the impact that this is going to make over in the South Woodline neighborhood. Uh, Love Joy Ministries is nestled, uh, in the corner of South Woodline, uh, close to I-20. Um, and if you didn't know it was there, you probably would pass by it and, you know, not paying any attention, uh, without giving, uh, acknowledgement to the great work that they are doing, uh, with young people, um, in that area. And so teaching them how to read, teaching them, you know, um, just different skills that they need, and, and really, this, this money or this offer funding would help them to expose our young people to STEM, um, at a very early age, um, and really help to equip them, uh, with necessary skills to, like I says, to, you know, increase their curiosity around learning.
State, and so they have handling it.
Yeah, so it's a combination of hardware, um, and software, um, and the, it's a, also the Birmingham Department of Transportation is, is involved, um, and is, is helping to execute the project. Um, so, um, and, and this is a collaborative project between Protim Alexander and myself. Um, you know, as you know, Birmingham, uh, was built up around the railroads. Um, and we have literally thousands, thousands of at-grade crossings where, um, at any given time, um, motorists can find themselves impeded, um, by trains either, either moving, but oftentimes stopped on the tracks. And it's been, um, especially a, a problem on the, in the western portion of Birmingham. Um, Councilor Smithelman and, uh, Councilor, uh, Alexander's, um, districts have been especially impacted, um, because our, our mainline, um, railroad, uh, track, um, you know, goes through that western portion of the area, and it's one of the only sections along the entire, um, course, uh, tongue, along the entire rail line between Selma and Birmingham, um, where there's sufficient length of double track where trains can pass one another, uh, which means that, um, there may be a train parked in Birmingham to allow for another train that's on its way, um, up from Selma to be able to pass in Birmingham. So, um, again, you know, over the years, uh, the community has called for the city to address this problem, um, in one form or fashion. The, um, one of the dist- federal courts, um, has, you know, I, I don't know all of the technical details, but basically neither the municipality, the county, or the state can regulate, um, rail movement. movement. So, you know, even though various states have laws on the books saying, you know, if a train is blocking a roadway for a certain amount of time, you know, they can be fined, the federal courts have said that that's unconstitutional under the Interstate Commerce Clause. So because we can't make the railroad companies not block our streets, we have to think about a different solution. So what this system does is it actually detects when a train is coming down the track or, or when it's blocking a crossing, and it communicates to the DMS signs, which just means dynamic messaging signage. So those signs would be located around these crossings on main corridors so that before a motorist ever, you know, gets to that crossing, they know that it's blocked, or it's going to be blocked, or for how long it's going to be blocked, and would give them the opportunity to take another route. The systems also, yeah, the systems also are starting to integrate with navigation apps. So if people use Google Maps or Waze or some of the others, those systems will automatically account for the blockages and just be able to send people, you know, to a different route, and they never even encounter the blockage.
Wow. Well, I'm impressed. I'm glad I asked.
Thank you, if I may. Thank you. I'm glad you asked. I was gonna pull it off just so that we could have this discussion and be sure that the residents knew what we were trying to do with this particular ARPA project. I do want to thank my colleague, President O'Quinn, through his work with the Transportation Committee and numerous meetings that have been attended. I thank you for bringing this to my attention as well as that of Counselor Smithman. I know that I think we hold the record on having the most number of train tracks running through each of our districts, and also I have quite a proliferation of double train tracks. So you can sit there for one, you think it's cleared, and you have another one sitting there that's still stalled. And so when I think of the safety and the mobility that will be enhanced by this prior knowledge for motorists to know that they're encountering a tr- a track that is, has a stalled train on it, you can go ahead and make detour and make other decisions where you just don't come upon it all of a sudden, and now you're sitting and waiting. I think often also of the students that walk back and forth to school that they encountered these stalled trains. So as Dr. Quinn said, on a state, local, county level, our hands are somewhat tied when it comes to trying to regulate the train system that's federal. But I was looking at this and very happy to see that this is something we can do here locally to try to minimize the frustration, and again, the safety risk and just the wear and tear on motorists and families. We have those trains that are blocked, they often can't even get to any of the schools in our area because, and that means then families have to detour, now you've got a parent that's late for work, and just all sorts of things. So this prior knowledge will help some planning and, again, increase mobility. Thank you.
I'm impressed.
There's, I believe we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
All right. That item passes. Madam Clerk, I would like to call an item out of order. Could we please call up item number thirty-six, the addendum item?
Item number thirty-six on the addendum. Yes, sir. Item number thirty-six is a resolution appointing four members to the Birmingham Waterworks Board for terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight, and will go into effect January first, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Okay. So this is an, an item that came through the Transportation Infrastructure Committee. As you're aware, the council has responsibility for appointing four members to the Birmingham Waterworks Board. We have the current terms of, or the current term of the appointees to the Waterworks Board expires December, December thirty-first of this year. So the Transportation Infrastructure Committee received a number of applications and lots of great candidates and interviewed those candidates, but the recommendation that was approved by the committee is here on, in the, in the item. So the recommendation from the Transportation Infrastructure Committee for appointment to the Waterwork, Waterworks Board for the term effective January first of twenty-twenty-five would be for the reappointment of Teresa Huffman for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight, and these all would expire at the same time, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. So the committee is recommending reappointment of Teresa Huffman, Larry Ward, and then new appointments of Jonathan Harris, who would be replacing the now-deceased Ron- Ronald Memes, and a new appointment for Ivan Holloway, who would be repres- replacing George Mon- Monkus. So those, that's the recommendation of the committee. We'll now consider any nominations. Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Madam Chair, note my abstention as well.
So Pro Tem Alexander has abstained, Counselor Tate has abstained. Is there anyone?
Counselor Moore said no.
Okay, Counselor Moore, so a no vote.
No.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so those appointments are approved. The next item?
They're before you, since you just closed, then you opened up for nominations, so you just closed the nominations. So we need to vote on those.
Okay, got you. All right. Everybody got that? So we voted, yeah, we, we didn't apparently, so there was a motion to close the nominations, it was seconded, we need to now vote on closing the nominations.
Well, you've already voted.
We need to vote on approving the slate.
Yeah. They're closed now, so now you actually have to vote on these recommendations.
Yes, I move to approve these nominations.
Second. Okay. All in, how about I just do a voice vote?
Yeah, let's, let's just do a, a roll call.
I'll just do them, and I'll do a roll call vote. Okay, so we are now voting on the appointments of the four names that you, you did call out. Counselor Member Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Member Clark.
Aye.
Counselor Member Moore.
No.
Counselor Member Smithman.
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate. Counselor Member Williams.
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods.
Aye.
President Pro Tem Alexander.
Abstained.
Counselor President O'Quinn.
Aye.
Okay, so we have five, I'm sorry, we have six ayes, one nay, and two abstentions.
Right, thank you. So those appointments are approved. The next item.
It'll be thirty-three if we go back to the.
Thirty-three, yes, right, yes.
And that item is on page twelve. A resolution setting a public hearing January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, which was set for November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four by Resolution Number fifteen fifteen dash twenty-four adopted by the council October first, twenty-twenty-four, due to the cancellation of the November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four council meeting to provide publication of notice of the public hearing to determine whether the closure of certain roads in the Eastlake neighborhood under Project Safe Streets Eastlake initiated pursuant to Section ten dash two dash nine of the General Code of the City of Birmingham shall be continued indefinitely to provide traffic calming measures for reduction of crime. And I just need a motion, please?
I move approval.
Second. Counselor Abbott and Counselor Moore?
Yes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
All right. That item passes. Next item, please.
Okay. Just, I think Counselor Woods is outing Counselor Clark, correct? Okay. Just want to make sure I don't have the, all right. The next item, item would be item number thirty-four, also on page twelve. A resolution setting a public hearing January seventh, twenty-twenty-five to consider the adoption of a resolution assenting to the vacation of thirty-two thousand square feet of the right-of-way of Sixth Avenue North that is located parallel to and between Mesa Airport Highway and Seventh Avenue North and perpendicular to and between Twenty-Eighth Street North and Twenty-Ninth Street North, thirty-eight thousand four hundred square feet of the right-of-way of Twenty-Ninth Street North that is located parallel to and between Twenty-Eighth Street North and Thirty-first Street North and perpendicular to and between Mesa Airport Highway and Seventh Avenue North, so that the owner can consolidate property located at five oh nine and six oh one Twenty-Eighth Street North and twenty-eight hundred and twenty-eight twenty-eight Mesa Airport Highway on behalf of Evans Meat LLC, the owner, and this is case number S U B, twenty-twenty-four dash zero 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 seventy-six, and I need a motion.
I move approval.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
All right. That item is approved. Next item is our addendum item, item thirty-five.
Yes, sir. Item number thirty-five on the addendum is, I hate it. An ordinance to repeal Title Twelve Licensing and Regulations, Chapter fourteen Peddlers and Solicitors, Article C, Mobile Food Service Temporary Vendors of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, and to replace it with a new Title Twelve Licensing and Regulations, Chapter fourteen Peddlers and Solicitors, Article C, Mobile Food Vendors, to further provide for the permitting and operation of mobile food vendors in the City of Birmingham. This is an item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent first in order to take up the item.
Move.
Second.
Counselor Member Abbott?
No.
Counselor Member Clark is absent. Counselor Member Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate?
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams?
No.
Counselor Member Wood is absent. President Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
And Counselor President O'Quinn?
No. So, we don't have unanimous consent. However, without objection, I'd like to offer some explanation. So the, what's before you, or what will be before you next week is a amendment of our food truck ordinance, and because we're nearing the end of the year and all of our permitting and licensing occurs on the front end of the year, the staff are trying to get this new process in place so that our food truck vendors have an opportunity to get their licensing and permitting done at the beginning of the year when this normally happens. So I allowed it as an addendum so that we could get that first reading, and, but I know that there are going to be questions about this. It was presented in Transportation Infrastructure yesterday. So again, I allowed it as an addendum so that we could get that first reading, but I know there's questions. It'll be on the agenda again next week because we didn't get unanimous consent today, but we, again, just tried to get that first reading, get a extra, little bit extra notice out. So that's that. That's the explanation. We are now going to, ready to move on to new and old business. Counselor Moore, are you ready?
Yes, sir. So the Norwood Neighborhood Association meeting that takes place on Wednesdays at six P.M. is actually canceled for the Thanksgiving holiday. Collegeville Neighborhood Association will take place on Monday, December the second, at six P.M. at the Belt of Baptist Church. Brownsville Neighborhood Association will be having their meeting canceled as well on December second, on Monday. The Zion City Neighborhood Association meeting will take place on Monday, December the second, at six thirty P.M. via Zoom. This past weekend, had an opportunity to do the D4 Ham giveaway, had the pleasure of partnering with Team No Breaks. We were able to, you know, really support our housing authorities this year. Normally, we do a first-come, first-served, but we're very intentional about making sure that we connect with our housing authority, and so want to say, you know, happy Thanksgiving to all those families that were able to be blessed this past weekend. Also had the opportunity to go to the Alabama Aerospace and Aviation High School last week to talk to students about their H, or talk to students during their HBCU week. They asked me to come and speak for the Tuskegee Day. Was really, you know, blown away by the things that those young people are learning. From what I understand, they have a really, really great drone team that is highly ranked nationally, and they're, again, just learning some really cool things in terms of, you know, all the different career opportunities concerning aviation in the area of aerospace. So kudos to them and, you know, congratulations to, you know, those seniors that, you know, in advance, that I got a chance to speak to. And then, last but not least, Thanksgiving is around the corner, so I'm extremely thankful for, you know, my family and all the people that, you know, are in District Four, as, as well as my, my oldest, Nuri Shadé Moore, who will be turning six years old, that's crazy, on November twenty-ninth. And so just want to say I love you, Nuri, who's at home right now, probably watching this, and didn't have to go to school, and, yeah, hopefully everybody else is, you know, thankful as well. A lot, last but not least, this is the last name. So we do have a vacancy on the Park and Recreation Board. If you are interested in serving on that board, please email terry.chapman@birminghamal.gov. Again, Terry, T E R R I dot Chapman, C H A M P A M A N, at birminghamal.gov. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next planning and zoning meeting is scheduled for December twelfth at three thirty P.M. in the council chambers. Our last two meetings have been canceled, so it's been a long time since we had a meeting, so I hope that everyone can be there, December twelfth. We have three vacancies on the zoning board of adjustment. We have three vacancies on the zoning board of adjustment and two vacancies on the Birmingham Planning Commission. So, interested parties should please submit their resumes by December the sixth to valerie dot Abbott at birminghamal.gov. This coming Monday is December second, shockingly, and the Glen Iris neighborhood will not meet. They've canceled their December meeting. Um, I hope that everybody has a safe and blessed Thanksgiving celebration and that you, unlike me, won't eat too much. Um, Thanksgiving is one of my favorite holidays. My mother was from Chicago, and so she stuffed her turkey. And I have taken over stuffing the turkey. And, um, and I love it. It's a Yankee, it's a, it's a Yankee tradition that is excellent. Um, there are not very many of them. So, if you have any concerns or issues about things that you see while you're out driving around in our city that are wrong, that you think need to be fixed, you can either call three one one or download the My Be Ham three one one app where you can attach photos and write up a description of the problem the way you want it to be said instead of the way the person on the phone thought they heard you say. Um, so I think a lot of the My Be Ham three one one app, and I love attaching photos. No one can say they couldn't find it if you attach a photo. And last but not least, we're asking all residents of District Three to please continue to visit our website for real-time updates and additional information on happenings in the city of Birmingham that we don't have time in our three minutes to tell you about. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Smitherman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Valerie, I mean, Council Abbott, is it December eleventh or twelfth for planning and zoning? The twelfth is Thursday.
It says here twelfth, but are you telling me that's not a Wednesday?
Yeah.
So, well, let me figure it out.
No, I was just making sure.
Uh, the next. It should be the eleventh.
Okay, gotcha. The next budget and finance meeting will meet on Monday, December ninth at three thirty P M. This will be our only, um, meeting in December due to the Christmas holiday. Submissions are due next Wednesday, December fourth by noon. Um, this past Friday, we had our annual, uh, turkey and box giveaway to help families prepare for Thanksgiving. Um, I'm extremely grateful for our incredible partners and volunteers. We had, um, two You Serve high schoolers, um, that really enjoy putting the boxes in people's cars, um, the Brothers of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity, um, the Community Food Bank of Central Alabama, my father, Senator Roger Smitherman, and some of my family and friends. So, uh, it felt really good to give back to people, and they were very thankful. Um, so I just hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving, uh, they enjoy themselves, don't eat too much. I hope everybody has a safe one as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Pro Tim Alexander?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. These are our announcements for District Seven. We do not have any Neighborhood Association meeting scheduled this week. I think everybody's preparing for the holiday. Uh, Tuesday, December first, we have bulk trash and brush pickup scheduled for Industrial Center and Tarpley City. And then Monday, December second, bulk trash and brush pickup will come back to Roosevelt City. We just had it last week, so now we're going to get another one. But that is good. That is a good thing. Um, I also want to, uh, uh, thank the other partners that were there on Sunday at Greater St. John Baptist Church, the McClure Family, District Seven, um, other partners. I don't think there was a turkey left in Birmingham after, after all of this. Thanks to also my colleagues. I know each of you had multiple giveaways, so thank you. So, um, I do want to, uh, thank those residents that came out and those sponsors, uh, for that event. I do just want to remind you that municipal court judge applications have been open. They'll stay open until December sixth. So if you're interested in applying for either of these four part-time municipal judge positions, please, uh, get that in before December sixth. The length of term is four years for the part-time judges. You can apply either by logging on to www.birminghamal.gov/boards-and-agencies. And then you would select the municipal court judge option and select apply, and then follow those steps. Or you could just simply send your cover letter and resume to izola.hall@birminghamal.gov. And so we'll continue to, um, take in those applications. Just want to remind you, after we all get through eating, we still got to be sure we get the trash right. So, if your trash pickup is Thursday on Thanksgiving Day, let's all be sure to put it out on Wednesday. So I'm going to have to remember, my trash will go out tomorrow, okay? Because I typically have a Thursday pickup. For anyone that has pickup on Friday, then, uh, those household routes will be picked up on Monday, December second. So just be sure you're aware of these holiday pickups, okay? We'll keep the city clean.
Yes, and recycling?
And recycling, there we go, thank you. And recycling for Wednesday, December fourth, will be picked up Wednesday, December eleventh. They didn't have anything else. Are we good?
Right, yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Those are, oh, and I do have one other item. I would like to ask you all to join me in, um, asking for unanimous consent to bring forward a sympathy, a resolution of sympathy. We had one of our food truck vendors that passed suddenly, and I know I wish Chad was here because he always told me, you got to get by Fat Charles, you got to get by Fat Charles. And, um, so, um, Charles Pilot, the third, I believe, was his name. Um, he was an entrepreneur, just had a great following here in the city of Birmingham. So I'd like to call for unanimous consent to bring forward a resolution of sympathy.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And now the item, thank you.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much.
All right, Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Madam Pro Tim. His funeral service is on Saturday at refresh. Uh, Pastor Van, um, will be doing his, um, Phillips will be doing his services, so it's at twelve o'clock. Um, thank you, um, Madam Pro Tim, uh, for bringing forth, um, Charles Pilot. And Toria Pilot is, is my niece and his mayor to his partner, Chris Pilot. So these are the announcements for Fountain Heights, um, for District Nine. Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association will meet tonight, November the twenty-sixth at six P M. at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. Dolomite Neighborhood Association will be, no, Association will be held tonight. Also, they're going to do conference call. At six P M., you can call in by dialing seven two oh eight four three two six six nine three, and the code is three seven eight nine four two six. Central Prep Neighborhood Meeting will be held next Monday, December the fourth. And you can also dial in by calling seven two oh seven four oh nine seven three two. And the pass code is three four triple eight zero eight. Sherman Heights Neighborhood Meeting will not meet this Monday. Next scheduled meeting will be scheduled for January the sixth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. at the Morning Star Christian Church, and it's located at sixteen hundred Slaton Avenue. And you can also dial in as well at nine five two two oh six four nine one eight. Pass code two two three four one eight. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held, um, on Tuesday, December the tenth at one P M. in the council chambers. Please submit your agenda items via email by Wednesday, November the fourth, no later than twelve noon to gregory.stanley@birminghamal.gov and patrice.stan, dot collins@birminghamal.gov. Um, also, I want to thank all the constituents that came out to the third annual State of the District for the district. It was a really nice meeting. And also, we want to thank Ms. Brenda Brown-Bosom, but it's for her community health form, our power. Very, very informative, very powerful, um, event. I always love supporting Ms. Brenda because she gives out great information to the community. So, it was a very good event. Um, had some people from U A B. there, um, that was giving out some great, great information, physical therapy, showing you how you can exercise, just, you know, just moving yourself along, if you even sitting in a chair, how you can, that can be impactful. I also want to thank Gooder, um, the Brothers of A five A, um, for coming out. Um, the Serious Law Injury Group, B Grace Media for a very, 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 very robust giveaway. It was slated to, to service five hundred people, but we know we serviced way over seven hundred people. So Gooder, you know, provided, um, hams and people had a choice between hams, turkeys. We gave milk, eggs, cheese, just everything that people needed. So I just want to thank my partners that have A five A, um, brothers. Ryan was there. Thank Ryan Jackson for being present, helping, um, it was a great event. I just could not thank Gerder and Jasmine Crow enough for, um, the services that her team rendered. Um, very, very, um, beautiful event. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Stay safe out here, as my colleagues have all said. We're going to eat all this good food, but do not forget to get up and exercise, please. It is super important. Thank you, Mr. President. That is my announcements for today.
All right, thank you. Uh, for District Five, um, the, well, let me first say that for the Transportation Infrastructure Committee meeting, our next meeting will be held Monday, December ninth at two P M. If you have any submissions, please contact Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.phillips@birminghamal.gov. Pro Tim Alexander already detailed, um, the change in the garbage pickup. Uh, the city of Birmingham will celebrate World AIDS Day on Wednesday, December fourth from eleven A M. to two P M. at the Beltwell Auditorium. There'll be games, music, health screenings, panel discussions, and community partner activations. Again, that's Wednesday, December fourth, from eleven to two. Jones Valley Teaching Farm will unveil its community mural on Saturday, December seventh, from noon to two at the Center for Food Education located at seven oh one Twenty-Fifth Street North, joining them for activities, farm tours, and light refreshments. The A G Gaston Motel will host its inaugural Holiday Harmony Open House on Saturday, December seventh, from ten A M. to two P M. Um, I think that most people know where the A G Gaston Motel is. This will be on, this will be an opportunity for you to tour the renovated hotel and connect with organizations in the Civil Rights District. As the mayor talked about at the introduction of the meeting, um, the City of Birmingham Holiday Block Party will take place on Sunday, December eighth, at four P M. in front of City Hall. Again, um, that starts at, at four. The tree lighting start, it, it will take place at five thirty. And then finally, um, just a reminder that there's three more market dates for the Pepper Place Market. Um, those are this Saturday, uh, November thirtieth. The, um, the next dates are December seventh and December fourteenth. And after that, you have to wait until the spring. Um, so that concludes my, the announcements for District Five. Um, is there any other business that need to be discussed? Councilor Abbott?
I did forget something. I wanted to thank the administration and the, um, Capital Projects Group for getting the Lake Caldwell Project on our agenda today. I know that the residents over there, and particularly the people at Virginia Sanford Theater, that underwater crowd with no scuba gear, and then the people at Episcopal Place. There's lots of people that are very happy that this is getting ready to move. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I forgot earlier. So thank you.
Excellent. Anybody want to do the honors?
I move adjournment.
Before we move, I just have one shout out.
All right.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
President, we do have some speakers on the list.
Oh, that's, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Before we get to the speakers, if I could just give this shout out as we prepare for our speakers, I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to my dad's alma mater, Miles College. They won the first round of the Division Two Playoff Game. Their next game is Valdosta State, and it'll be this weekend in Valdosta, Georgia. So, congratulations to the Miles College of Affairs. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, my apologies, I, I, um, yeah, so we're ready for our public speakers. You got anything you want to?
It was more of the same. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, especially our, our city employees that will be working over Thanksgiving. We appreciate you all, as well as our city employees that will not be working over Thanksgiving. Um, we also partnered with, uh, Commute Food Bank of Central Alabama. So if you are a family that feels like you can't afford a full meal of Thanksgiving, um, if you visit feedingalabama.org, uh, there are opportunities there for you to fill that gap, whatever it might be.
Thank you. All right, now, Madam Clerk, we're ready for our public speakers.
Veronica Jibrine, I'm sorry if I.
Do we have a, uh, remote mic that? Right, yeah, they're going to bring you a microphone.
Check, check.
All right.
Thank you. Hello, my name is, uh, Ela Veronica Jibrine. It's, I came here today because I'm having a problem with enforcement of the rules. I have a store. I brought a Catherine store.
Can, can you state your address, please?
Ninety eighty Parkway East.
Okay, and please hold the mic up so that we can hear you.
Okay. I got a, I got a voice on me, trust me. I apologize. And like I said, greetings. Appreciate sitting here and going through the whole political thing tonight. It's different. It's been a long time since I got a political lessons. But I think, you guys, I have a problem with enforcement at that address. There are Arabic men's with the old hotel, is, I think it's, uh, the, I think his name is Adula, Diamond Furniture. Used to be a grocery store there. And I had, I got a Catherine store. I had one before in Crestwood. And what has happened? They, your co-enforcement, so with Mr. Smith, before he retired, and somebody took his place, came out and cited them for all the wrongs in their building. I came in the building. I'm legally blind, okay? Couldn't see. And I bought it from a company. Then all of a sudden, this company changed its name in December when I was out of state. The state of Alabama revoked rehab, gave me funds, assisted me with this. They helped pay my rental. But what has happened, each time the inspector come out, from Valentine's to Puckett, everybody come out. They, they've changed owners, okay? And what I'm having trouble with is that they are not enforcing it. They told me they would come and have a hearing, have them in court. They have not did anything. They get fake people to bring in their building. Right now, I cannot open my store. I, I got licensed in July last year from this city. And because of fire hazards and damages, I cannot honor my contracts. I, I'm paying my people when they came aboard. I run a textile manufacturing company. I teach, also I train, I also, I work with overseas companies to bring different dealerships in. And what has happened, when they come in, I cannot get no, nothing plugged in, no electric, everything is dead wrong. And I keep telling them, please enforce it. Mr. Pucker wrote a list of about fourteen things, and they have not did any of it. And what they have done, they have actually physically attacked me. And from my understanding, I was said, I was told by one of the officers, I could be dealing with people, like I said, criminals. And I don't want to call what they said to me, the name. But right now, I want the city to come in and have them to enforce this thing against them. Because right now, last few weeks, we didn't have water. It rained in my building. And I got it visually impaired. I did not know that, you know what I'm saying? I couldn't see it. But the company that I got it from, now the company has changed their name in, in December, to another company name. And they are steadily paying these men. And what I've gotten, I have had my business, and I saw the mayor on TV with the president saying that's what we're going to do, and they will do it for women owners. I tried my best. I knocked on doors and asked for help, and what I did, I, I made a profit. I took my retirement money, my, my husband's death benefits, and I opened this up myself. Because textile is back, you know what I'm saying? We need to do textile for the city, okay? But right now, I cannot turn nothing on. I have a few lights, and, uh, the title place, no, I said the tax place next to me, Jackson hear it, they left. And it's raining in the building. Nobody's hearing me. They won't do nothing. They want to do nothing for me, okay?
Mr. Jibrine, um, so the, the building that you're referring to, that's ninety eighty Parkway East?
It is the diamond furniture, wherever, it's the diamond furniture building there. It's, it's in the Huffman Center. That's the name of Huffman Center. And on the right-hand side, when you come into the mall, they're, they're stripping, taking stuff out of my store, taking it to their stores. And it's just a beautiful, on my side, next to Hancock Fabric was there before. It is boldly milled. It is boly mildew, and it sucks into the building. I've got pictures proof what I've done. I paid, and they're paying people off. Now, you guys say that you get revenue. There used to be a... It was a... What gives the name of it? It was across from Christmas Creamy, there used to be a car dealership there. And they disappeared. They're behind my building now. They're pulling cars, and there is sewage back there. And what he does at Diamond Furniture, he is having those men, he's paying $50 a day for those food trucks. They selling dogs, rabbits, everything. But nobody's enforcing it, nobody's doing nothing. But when somebody put their hands on me... Now, I know, because I studied religious studies, and I was married to a email. And I know they consider the wife property. But when I have an Arabic man put his hands on me, and I called the city, and the city won't do anything about it because somebody's paying somebody's money. Now, I'm not accusing, I could go to hell for that. One thing, I'm not going to hell for nothing. I would go to heaven. But what I'm saying to you, you guys need to enforce... The fire inspector comes out every two weeks. They don't come in the building, they don't follow her.
Okay, thank you.
They won't do nothing. And I keep saying over and over, they need to enforce it. If they said the city is going to take us to a smaller court, then they're going to take us to a larger court. I've been took to court, even the judge got paid.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So we'll refer this issue to the administration chief?
What happened to Councilman Woods? He's in my... I've never met him, I've came here...
So the council isn't responsible for code enforcement? Code enforcement comes under the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits. And it's, you know, the mayor's office is, or the executive branch of government oversees the operation, day-to-day operations of the city. So Chief Sparks is going to offer a response.
I'm sorry again, say it again?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So staff has spoken, staff has spoken with her, and code enforcement is going to be going out and investigating.
I can barely hear you.
Our code enforcement teams will be going out to investigate the items that you've lifted up. Staff has passed the information on to us.
Say it again?
The staff that you spoke with earlier, they've passed the information on to us.
She just took a history thing on me. She understands? She has... She've talked with them already?
Yes, ma'am.
For the mayor's office?
Yes.
So somebody will come and win?
The code enforcement teams will be going out to investigate.
Sir, they promised that before. This time, you say you're sure they can, it will come out?
Yes, so a part of what they'll do is investigate to what degree the city can engage as well. But they will follow up with you to discuss that. And we track it, so whenever we make this declaration in a public space, we follow up to make sure that they've come out.
My question, so there will be somebody that has taken Mr. Smith's place, the man I talked with the other day? He was over there, business? I got names, I have several names, Mark, I got all kinds of names.
We'll make sure that the staff follows up.
Thank you. So can we move to our next speaker, please?
Do you have a card? I can get in touch with you? Oh, yeah, I have no problem.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is William R. Muhammad.
William R. Muhammad, 411 Loraine Street. Last time I was here, I talked to you about a public hearing that Commissioner Tyson had because the Water Works Board refused to answer any of the questions of the people who came to their hearing. Well, I wanted to report to you what I learned from that hearing. Four years ago, when I left the Water Works Board, we had did a refinancing of the debt, and the debt was $700 million. Well, I learned the other night that the debt is now $1 billion. $300 million increase in four years. And I asked a question that Raymond James have, was the leader on all of those bond deals? The chairman of the Finance Committee is a former employee of Raymond James, a former manager. And I'm saying, if that's not unethical, then isn't it the appearance of being unethical? The same chairman of the Finance Committee had taken all of the money from the Water Works out of black banks. And when it was brought up, he said he was doing this to reduce the rates on black people. I said that they are declaring war on the black community because not only are they increasing rates, but they are increasing debt, and all of that adds to increase in rates. So I just wanted to make you aware of what was going over there. I know that when I came in, one of the council members, that's a friend of mine, say, "Are you here to cause trouble?" I never understood that, I never understood that. But I guess I am if I'm talking about things that y'all don't want to talk about. So the question that has to be asked, is the mayor's office and is the city council in cahoots with BWB attack on the black community? When you put all new people up there to go against the five people who are running everything now, and you put four new people up there, then it's like, I don't know. I had to ask y'all the question. Are y'all in cahoots with them taking over the Birmingham Water Works? Because the five people that's up there now are controlling operations and everything. And like I said, I can only feel like y'all contributing to it. I mean, you put some good people up there. Jonathan Harrison, I know him, and he's a good guy. I know Ivan Holloway, and he's a good guy. But they're still new people. I was shocked to hear that the mayor was appointing two new people. So y'all have turned it over to the outside companies that's running it now. They got people working in positions as consultants. The general manager is a consultant on a consultant contract. The assistant general manager is a consultant on a consultant contract. They got two other officers that are consultants on consultant contract. That means that they only have to answer to the board. That's interfering with operations. And nobody can find him but the board. So I give up, y'all won.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Lawrence Phillips. That's the last speaker that I have listed.
Okay, thank you. All right, I want to recognize our officers on duty. Today, we had with us Officer Jones from West Precinct and Officer Wesley from West Precinct. Thank you for being here, and now we're ready.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Meeting adjourned.
This afternoon, we are out at Jefferson County Family Court for a food distribution. And we've got lots of volunteers behind us who are going to be handing out food boxes with fresh vegetables and fruit and other items, along with some meats. Good time, happy holidays, and enjoy your Thanksgiving.
This is something that we started during the COVID-19 pandemic, where we had families who were challenged during the holidays. And so this just continues this over the number of years. With our D7 Days of Giving, we had, we gave away hens at the First Baptist Church Roosevelt City. And then we continued it where we gifted one family per neighborhood in D7. They had an opportunity to receive an entire fixings, along with the hen, but an entire fixing to make their Thanksgiving holiday complete.
Had opportunity to bless, we're very thankful for just being able to be a blessing. But during this Thanksgiving season, make sure you take time to recharge and count the things that you're thankful for as we get ready to wrap up the year. So enjoy your Thanksgiving, let's finish the year strong.
This Thanksgiving, we're teaming up with the Community Food Bank of Central Alabama to ensure every neighbor can enjoy a warm meal. As we gather with our loved ones this holiday season, let's appreciate our blessings and support of our community.
One of the things that I wanted to be very intentional about is making sure that we touch different families who really appreciated and needed, you know, the service, right? Wanted to make sure that we, you know, were way more intentional and, you know, accommodating in meeting people where they are.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. We're doing our annual Thanksgiving drive-through. Thank you to our partners, Community Food Bank of Alabama, and my father Roger Smitherman, and the Omegas as well, and the Alphas, and so everybody in my family, more of my family as well. So this is such a great time, giving back to the community, just helping people in whatever way we can during this holiday time.
We're feeding 500 families. I'm so excited. People lined up really early, there are a lot of folks out here. And we thought Legion Field was really large and able to accommodate a lot of cars until this morning.
So this is what the spirit of giving, this is what blessing looks like. We want to just thank my team, all the volunteers that are out here. Thank the people in District 9 for supporting. But again, happy holidays, happy Thanksgiving.
I want to wish everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. Keep your eyes open and enjoy your time with your family and friends.
What are we having in here next? Are you late?
I think that this is fantastic, to know the history of Cooper Green and all that the city and the county and the indigent residents of Birmingham have gone through to have a wonderful place like this for health care that has the top of the line of everything and is innovative. It's just very exciting, and the facility is absolutely beautiful.
So back in 1975, Mercy Hospital, which is next door, was renamed Cooper Green Mercy Hospital in honor of William Cooper Green. Now, Mr. Green was a staunch proponent of the hospital. Fought to make sure funds were available, resources were available for his operations. But he was also a very outspoken advocate for those individuals that had limited or no access to care, values that are still critically important to us today.
People needed a place to go where they could get health care, even if they didn't have the money to pay for it. You know, if you're sick, you're sick. It doesn't matter whether you have any money in your pocket or not. People fought for that, and I know that, you know, Mrs. Mosley, that they named the room down the way for, you know, she fought for health care for people who didn't have the money to pay for it. And she fought and fought and fought and fought. And somebody needs to fight for those folks because a lot of them can't fight for themselves. I mean, Sheila Tyson is another person who's been fighting for health care, good health care for people who didn't have the money to pay.
It's the Mosley Room. We were putting all this together back when it was just square boxes. We said, "We have to have something for you," and all that you've done for Cooper Green. So here you are, it's a beautiful room right here, where we have all sorts of activities for our patients. We have to come right in and be able to come in here, talk to each other, have education, and other things like that. What you think about that?
I'm looking at all the facilities that they have in this building. I'm thinking, gee, I wish I could come here, but I couldn't because I have insurance and I can go anywhere. And they'll be happy to see me because they'll take my insurance, and then they'll take my charge card, and, you know, everything will be paid for. But if you don't have money, health care is an enormous issue. So I better stop.
So today, we celebrate this wonderful new edifice, but recognize that it is little more than an empty shell without our trusting patients and our dedicated staff.
This just feels fantastic to know that, I mean, this is a facility that anyone would like to come to.